December third meeting of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith? Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nakosian?
Here.
All present.
Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance by Pastor Chris Grella? New England Baptist Church?
May we pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you that as we come here tonight in this month of December, Lord, we're reminded of your birth, your coming to this world. Lord, we pray for our leaders this evening, for the board, and for all those in attendance. Lord, we pray for wisdom that yet would come to us tonight as well. Lord, give us wisdom, bring unity to our area, and we thank you for the leadership that you have bestowed upon this area. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And I was corrected by my board. That was invocation. I was just, I didn't want to miss out on fourth grade Abington student, Ms. Ally Adkins, who's going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes from September third. All in favor? Next item is the adoption of the agenda. All in favor? Approval of the consent agenda? All in favor? Next item is matters presented by the board. Okay, one, I guess the biggest item matters presented by the board are retreat that was scheduled for this weekend, the Saturday on the seventh. It's going to be postponed into January to be determined at a future date. So if we could have a motion? Okay, all in favor?
I'm not sure if any of my other board members received a letter like this one in the mail. Postmark from the White Marsh Post Office. It's a letter and it stated, Dear Mr. Crisco, does the softwareplacer.ai mean anything to you? If not, I'd recommend asking County Administrator Carol Steele about it. Be sure to ask what kind of data this software can pull off someone's phone when they step into a public park. Ask what she did to warn people about the software in use and how much did it cost. This is sincerely from a concerned citizen, and I did not receive this until, had an issue with my mail, so I did not get this until after our last November meeting. So I just wanted to bring that up so maybe you could address that during your county administrator items.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move to county administrator items.
All right, I'll start off with a reminder of some festive events that will be happening. We have this Friday night, the Festival of Trees on Main Street. And Saturday, we have our county Christmas and holiday parade, which will be at three o'clock. And then that's followed by the tree lighting here in the court circle. And on Sunday, there'll be open house and a little teaser that we have some special things going on across the street, too, with a new area. So I hope everybody will come out and enjoy all of the weekend activities. Wanted to let the board know that the telecommunications committee, which is made up of both citizens and employees, that the citizens feel that they have done as much as they can do and feel like they're coming to meetings that there's not enough activity warranted for them to continue, that sort of like whatever's going to happen with broadband is going to happen and the citizens' role isn't warranted. So they, there was a, and this was a Board of Supervisors committee, not a board meeting, a board group. We have had in the past another group that was the cable TV group, and that was through an MOU with the school system and the county, and both organizations, the UOL and the school board, modified and moved those roles over to the telecommunications committee. And I believe that group, as far as all the broadcasting that we're doing, still needs to exist and discuss about equipment purchases, sharing of equipment, training, things like that, that are separate in a way than anything that we do with broadband, but it is related to our cable franchise agreement because that's where some of those funds come from. So my recommendation is that the staff and the board continue to work, and I'm going to bring up a suggestion in a minute as an example, to work towards the goal of ubiquitous broadband. But I, I tend to agree that I'm not sure there's really anything a telecommunications citizens committee can do right now that makes a difference. So if the board, you know, unless I hear something, then, you know, I think that we'll just go ahead and dissolve and then recreate the other one, which will have representatives from the schools and the county. The other thing I wanted to let you know, and you may have noticed an article in the paper about Verizon working with Matthews County for the BEAT grant that they were asking for the board's support. And as you all know, we've been working with Verizon, too, and I sent an email out saying, hey, you know, are you all going to apply for a BEAT grant for Gloucester? Because it's up to them. They don't have to tell us, but yet most of the people want a letter of endorsement. And I haven't heard a reply yet. But my concern is that as we are looked at by other fiber providers, that because of the crisscrossing we currently have with our current cable company, that we run into a situation where it may not be marketable and profitable as it has in the past, where other localities, their cable may be located in certain portions of the county, so there's large parts that they don't run into conflicts with. So my fingers are crossed that they still will come forward, or others. But I did have one smaller company that has requested a letter of support or a letter of endorsement. So if, if the board is comfortable, because I don't know the exact application date, but I believe it is in December, that, or it may be in early January, and I would hate to miss an opportunity to show support for somebody who's applying. There is no limit. If we had 10 different companies coming and asking, we could say to all 10 companies, yes, and they get extra points in their grant application versus if we don't do anything. So if, if the board, again, is comfortable with sort of a head nod, I will be glad to write letters of endorsement for anybody who comes forward with a BEAT application and to try to make us as competitive as we can be with the other localities. In reference to the question about AI, as you, the board may recall, that we were going to have a session dealing with artificial intelligence at the retreat, but we pushed it back because of a lower priority with all the other things. So I think we'll be working that into a work session. So for brevity purposes, I did have a conversation with Mr. Bizani, who received the same letter, and I don't know if you were able to get back with him or not, but this software is one that we are using for economic development, for the comp plan work that we're doing. It is completely anonymous. There is no linkage of any information to us, of any of the information that we get, other than things like when we look at how many people are passing by locations, so for trying to encourage a new business to come to the county, we can say, this is how many people are passing your business every, or this location every day. We can look and see where people go to and from, so where, if we're gathering people more from the middle peninsula going to the Walmart Shopping Center and what a percentage is versus Gloucester County residents. There's a lot of different things. We've been working on this for a number of months, and it's been very helpful. Ms. Spring has been heralded by one business that she was working with, you know, saying, this is fantastic, the information. Also, I think it's important for you to understand that we don't, the placer does not capture anything on children, nor does it allow collection of information at schools, at certain government facilities. They have all kinds of restrictions. I look forward to talking about it more and having that at a future work session, but I think it is, it's a common program that many localities are using, Main Street USA is using, and it has proven itself already to be very helpful. We have both Carol Rizzio and DuCRTs are on the, the team that's using it. Carol's been working on tons of information on roads that's going to help with our, our road planning with VDOT.
Mr. Bizani?
So the system does not gather information on cell, any cellphone information on particular individuals as they drive by, some kind of sensor that goes by? Do they pick up cellphone numbers, or does it do anything like that that would potentially identify?
It has no identification ability. So, no.
That was the biggest concern, I think, that the board had was that, you know, is it collecting information on citizens?
It, it collects information on, and they have a number of different vendors that they work with that provide the resource materials that, to say like, these people, you know, this is the demographics that you're dealing with. Again, what, we can do things by zip code, we can determine, and it uses algorithms, too. So there has to be some estimating. You have to have enough people to warrant the algorithm working. It's, and I'm not trying to be coy or avoid any answers, but it's, it's really, I think, will be best when you actually see it demonstrated and when we have, you know, a presentation, and then the citizens will also have the opportunity to see it in working.
Can it be demonstrated here?
That's, yes. I mean, we were going to do that, yes.
How about we do that?
Yes, we, we are definitely going to do that. It was going to be a retreat topic, but all the things that didn't make it onto the retreat will be at a work session.
Thanks, Mr. Crisco.
My concern is, I learned about this from an anonymous letter sent to me. I did not hear about this from my county staff. I did not hear about this from the staff that is working with this process. To me, that's an issue that we need to discuss at some other time because I don't like to be left in the dark, and I don't like to be the last one to find things out. You know, this is, you just said, you know, we're not pulling identifying marks off this stuff, but you can tell where people are coming from, what zip code they originated from. Well, that's, that's getting pretty, pretty down in the weeds because that is pretty close to identifiable. It's not far. You're, you're, you're teetering on, you got the zip code, how much harder is to get the billing address for that phone number? Those are things that I, that I have concern of, but the major, more, more concern is, I'd like to have known about this probably before we actually started using it. Don't care when we bought it. I, you know, that's, that's a different thing.
It's been in your weekly report, and I'll go back and pull that information. Several times I referenced that we were going to be getting it and that we purchased it.
Yeah, but there was no cost involved with it either. That's another piece that, you know, we, and I know it's county, you can use your contingency, and there's other software money out there, but again, this is something that probably should have been discussed in more detail prior to us receiving a letter about this.
I will pull the notes that I sent to the board. This was budgeted for with the comp plan funds, so this did not come from county administrator contingency.
How does it single or not count children?
Well, I don't understand how some of that works, but I know that they may have information that they don't provide to others. So for example, if you have a small sample size, like for zip codes, it will not give you the information. You have to have enough. If we wanted to help a business, you know, somewhere on Route 17 or Main Street and provide some economic data to help them with their marketing and things, if they don't have enough customer base, we can't do it. It has to have enough, and, and the company works with all of their statistics, and then they, if they don't have enough, they'll tell you, you know, can't give it to you. The same thing with the zip codes.
I would like to find out how they single out children because not many children pay their own cell bill. It's on a parent's name, so therefore it will be a parent's.
That was brought up in one of our questions. I do not remember the specific answer because we did, we, as a staff, brought up, well, how do you know? Because the parents pay for the cellphone. And I believe, and I don't know if anybody who's on there remembers, because there are several people, we meet, you know, once every two weeks or so with them. I want to say that they have an agreement or something with the cellphone companies that they're pulling out things, but it is not exposed to us. We don't know. So I will have to find that out, but our numbers, say, for example, we wanted to know how many people came to the Halloween event. We were asked, and so we can draw, and we did this for the Daffodil Festival, too. That was the first example we did. So we drew the area and looked at it, and the total was 2,700. Well, the algorithm includes a portion of expectation that with so many adults, there's going to be children involved. But when you have a children-specific event, it's going to be higher than what the number that you have. So we just kind of said, it was probably, we could say comfortably, more than 3,000 people attended. Because if we know there were 2,700 and that included some children, it's, you know, in that 3,000 range.
Thanks. I probably like most of the members of the board that have a lot of questions that would have been answered at the retreat and barring, you know, any extended conversation here that we have a long meeting tonight. Could you send us the notes that you provided regarding the AI? And it sounds like this is probably an important topic that might be worthy of a work session sooner than later?
Yes.
Given the concerns that were expressed here tonight?
Well, and I, and I also think it's important for the board to understand the other programs that we're using, too. ChatGPT and some of the other things are really helping with efficiency. So, you know, it's from marketing, economic development, planning, and efficiency. And we are also part of a national group that works with, it's just governments.
And I mean, I know when we were talking about the Daffodil Festival, you'd mentioned how many people were here based on that.
Right.
So I know it was mentioned, but, I mean, it goes back to still, my question is not, is about the kids.
Ms. Steele, if you don't remember tonight, can you send us the cost when you, when you find it out? Because I don't expect you to remember that tonight.
It's right at 20,000 a year for a subscription.
So a couple of things that kind of raised my eyebrow. One, your esteemed colleague, who I replaced, received a letter with my name and his address. So he brought it to me, and I opened it up, and it looks just like Mr. Crisco. So my, my question is, and it has been my question, because I asked Mr. Crisco when we were together if he received a letter, and he said yes. How this individual knew this, but, but, but we didn't. So that kind of struck me crazy. And my other thing is what Mr. Hudson brought out, which is, I want to know, I want to know about the children, too, because if I had a cellphone, it's on my mom and dad's plan, and when you call, when, when, when somebody called me, right, it's going to come up, it's going to come up your name. It's not going to come up their name if it's one of your children's. How exactly does it, how exactly is it not tracking my child or somebody else's child?
That's why I said there's a lot of unanswered questions worthy of a work session sooner than later, to explain at least.
So you mentioned ChatGPT, so I thought I'd interject. Christopher Newport has, has disallowed any student from using ChatGPT. You can actually tell ChatGPT to write an essay, 15-page essay on the assassination of Abraham Lincoln with, with citations, and it will write it in seconds. So we've decided not to allow students to use that, and we have a certain test to prove it. But AI is, you know, if, if, I, I would be interested in more information on this placer, placer AI, because if they can get zip codes, they can get down to individuals, I think. But I'm not certain, but who knows? Who knows what this thing can do?
I, I look forward to sharing more information with you all, and I think that, and we've had a number of views with the leadership team going through the demonstration and addressing some of the same questions. You know, nobody, there's not anybody on staff that wants to see individual information or feel like there's a privacy thing that's being violated. We feel just as strongly. And so I look forward to having that opportunity to discuss how it's being used and maybe to reassure you all some more, as well as the public who might hear part of this tonight and think the worst.
You know, we should also think there's general issues of privacy because every time you use this phone for anything, you're followed if you got GPS on it.
Right.
And any kind of purchase, anything you do, they follow you everywhere.
Right.
So it's, it's unfortunate, you know, part of us growing in a very high-tech society, the, the cameras that are out there following people, it's, it's out there, and I think it's something that we all should be, you know, concerned about and at least well aware of what's happening.
All done. Thank you.
All right. Next item was the scheduled presentation, the quarterly update from Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. McKnight?
All right. Good evening, members of the board. I'm here to give my quarterly update for VDOT in Gloucester County. Lots going on. Did want to highlight some construction projects that were just completed. There were three roads that were just completed with paving, Hickory Fork, TC Walker, and Tide Mill. I did want to acknowledge specifically on Hickory Fork and TC Walker, there were some issues with the contractor, and I've heard a lot of those complaints from the folks, especially on Hickory Fork and TC Walker. They were addressed with the contractor. In one case, the entire crew was removed from, from that job site and replaced with a completely different crew, and those will, those issues will be noted at a future time and date as well. But didn't receive a lot of complaints for Tide Mill. Mr. Bizani, I don't know if you did, but mainly it was Hickory Fork and, and TC Walker were the brunt of the complaints. Another construction project, know it says underway, but it's substantially complete, the rural rustic project on Bonneville Road. That's substantially complete. It is pending a, a traffic engineering review, which is why it's not in the completed portion, but the majority of the work is done on that rural rustic project. Some, I did want to mention the bridge project at the Matthews Gloucester County line on Route 14, 314 Burke Mill Stream rehabilitation that is underway. There was a substantial traffic switch for that project, and the completion date is late fall of 2025, so it is still on, on, on a schedule to be completed during that time period. Everything, now that things have kind of settled down, it seems that everything is working the way it should be. I know there were some concerns with a U-turn movement. That's been alleviated, so hopefully that will be smooth sailing for the, the remainder of that project. Some traffic engineering items that I did want to highlight that are not in my update. We have received quite a few complaints about the lights and the timing along the 17 corridor between the Riverside Hospital all the way down essentially to Short Lane. That entire stretch of lights and the coordination of those signals is being currently reviewed. There, specifically around rush hour, there seems to be a substantial amount of backup at some of those lights. So they are reviewing that entire corridor to ensure that it's, you know, to find out what's going on and then correct that and hopefully get the coordination right.
I knew you were coming tonight, so I didn't waste time with a phone call to, to bug you some more, but I'm hearing some complaints all as far south as Cannon Drive as well.
Okay.
It's one more stoplight, so I figured.
No, I mean, that makes sense. I've heard reports all the way that it'll back up to the Toyota dealership, so absolutely. I did want to mention some meetings of significance there. We did host a locality day for the area planners all in the middle peninsula, just to go over grand opportunities. I thought that was a, that was a good meeting, just to get everyone, all the areas' planners together and discuss that, get some district staff down as well. We also met with county officials to kick off a STAR study along the Route 17 and Route 14 corridors, Route 14 from the 17 intersection to Wareneck Road and Route 17 from Short Lane to Featherbed. And as a reminder, STAR stands for Strategically Targeted Affordable Roadway Solutions. And essentially what they're doing is they're, they're studying those corridors, looking for anything that's going on, whether it be a safety-related operational issue. They're evaluating every single intersection. So for example, Crab Thicket on Route 14 or Cannon Way on Route 17 Featherbed Lane, I know is another one that's been brought up before. And then developing solutions for those with input from the public and county officials, and then putting those, those solutions into a digestible packet that can be submitted for funding through either SmartScale or some other type of funding source. It basically ready, ready makes those projects so that the county just essentially has to submit the packet for funding consideration based on those findings. So have, I'm excited to see where we go with those, with that study and what the, the solutions are that come out of it. Some supervisor requests and updates that I did want to touch on. As you may be aware, the 17 northbound left turn flashing yellow arrow onto Crew has been adjusted from, it is now only active from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. After a traffic engineering review of that intersection, there was a, a spike in accidents after the installation of that flashing yellow arrow at that intersection. Spoke with state police. They had seen some of the similar issues there. It was reviewed, and that has been adjusted for only between 7:00 PM and say, 7:00 AM is when it'll be active. All of the accidents that occurred were during the daytime hours. None of them were at night. Jenkins Neck and Big Island Road. Dr. Orth, that ditching is still scheduled for December, so we'll hopefully get that taken care of here soon. And I did want to mention, I'd be remiss, it's cold out there. We are getting into snow season, so that may mean snow. Hopefully it does not, but if it does, we'll, we're, we're ready to, to go with that. But I did want to just mention that. Please be safe out there. Take your time if it does snow. Don't rush. Stay home if possible. But with that, I'll take any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Crisco?
I see there's no construction projects for the next 24 months, so does that mean that our cut will start being built within? I see there's no construction projects for the next twenty four months, so does that mean our cut will start being built within those two years?
It it is, it would the R cut, you're referring to Woods Crossroads. It went out to bid in November and the bids are supposed to be coming back next week. I can't say that there's a project until those bids come back and are reviewed for responsiveness. And and that sort of thing, but they are expecting them back next week.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions, Mr. McKnight, thanks for the update. So on the bridge project on Route fourteen, Route seventeen, we had some concerns from a constituent about the ability to do a U turn there. There's a fairly fairly large subdivision in Gloucester before you get to that. Is a U turn now permitted there?
Yes, yeah, that was reevaluated and removed. Based on. I I was notified by Ms. Steel about that and they reevaluated that and removed it.
Okay. Second question is. I I appreciate the change at the light by the Kroger that you mentioned, Crew Road. I think that will help. I'm I'm aware of many, many crashes at the Braves Point flashing. Yellow turn, so I if if you could evaluate that, there there's been some very serious accidents there. Some some have occurred at night, although some have have occurred in the daytime, so.
Okay.
If you could take a look at that. And then regarding Woods Crossroad, just for the public's benefit, I just wanted to mention. That of course, we've had a long. Discussion about that intersection, the danger of that intersection, the many, many crashes that have occurred there, the lives lost there. And after some efforts by our board and I know Mr. Crisco reached out to. Individuals to request a meeting and that meeting did occur approximately six weeks ago with Ms. Steel and myself. And the Secretary of Transportation was present, who's the cabinet level. Officer of Governor Youngkin's administration, so he came with his deputy to Gloucester as well as the Commissioner of the Virginia Department of. Of Transportation with his deputy. So we had the highest transportation officials in the Commonwealth of Virginia, came to Gloucester County. Of course, Mr. McKnight was present. We had a very, very thorough discussion about Woods Crossroads, again reiterated reiterated. What I believe is my constituents' request and many in Gloucesters request for a traffic signal at that intersection. I think the net result of the meeting, we certainly had a good exchange of of information. I I I wanted to express my appreciation for these officials to come to Gloucester to hear firsthand our concerns. The ultimate decision from the these officials is that that they are moving forward with the R cut. The R cut, based on cost evaluations that were provided to us, it would would cost less than a traffic signal due to the extensive engineering that would. Take place at the intersection. I wish we had known that information previously when we were having this discussion. We had some numbers that that weren't in that range, and so that was a confusing for our board. I think it was confusing to the public. But it appears that that the projected timeline of beginning construction could happen as early as. The spring of twenty six, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's that's correct.
Rough timeframe, of course, the bids have to be addressed, but. So I just wanted to. State that for the public's benefit regarding the latest update on that intersection. I don't know, Mr. McKnight, you wanted to add any other perspective from V D O D that that I didn't mention?
No, no, sir, I do appreciate everyone from Gloucester attending that meeting. It was a productive meeting. And do, as you indicated, there there were, they're they're data driven, it's a data driven process, looking at the data. This is the greatest benefit. Based on that, on that information that we have, so. But yes, sir, do appreciate you attending that meeting.
Mr. Bazani.
Appreciate you going to that meeting. Even after these high level officials from Virginia came down from the state to to to, did they actually visit Woods Crossroad? Did they they actually visited or?
They traveled through it and expressed that they were very familiar with the intersection. They they have really all of them had some ties to the area, so they were quite familiar with it. So I was I was certainly impressed with their knowledge of the situation.
So so. They still believe that the R cut would be the best solution for that intersection?
Yes, sir, based based on the data that we have, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Crisco.
And then you go.
So the data that you have, I have still been waiting for the answer to a question from the very first meeting, and I've asked it then, I've asked it at every meeting, I'll ask it again tonight. Where does an R cut exist? In Virginia or North Carolina? Where the speed limit is sixty miles an hour?
Well, I know there are many on Route seventeen in in North Carolina.
You've got seventeen from the Virginia border. Well past. I think to William Williamson or. Windsor, there's on there. And thirteen in North Carolina, you have it from. Tar Heel. South on thirteen, then turn into eleven. That I know of that I travel regularly.
None in Virginia where our folks are getting their data.
Well, the the data is from nation, it's nationwide data. North Carolina, Maryland, Minnesota.
But the peculiar angle of that particular intersection, that that's. That's just a peculiar angle that doesn't exist anywhere else, right? That's that's typically R cuts are where you have a perpendicular, you know, perpendicular turn onto another direction of the highway. But this is a, this is an angular thing where it's that makes the intersection more precarious, which would, to me, would warrant putting a traffic light there.
Well, it.
But apparently these officials that came down didn't feel that way.
Right, you have to evaluate for site distance, what the site distance is at the turnaround locations, what it currently is. All of that is taken into account when you're designing either an R cut or a a signal for that matter.
Dr. Orth.
Okay, well, first, I do want to express my sincere appreciation of what you did down on Big Island Road. And the understanding of why they couldn't dig the trenches earlier rather than later because of the need for that road to settle and they didn't want to mess it up, which. You know, all this is, is there, we're really pleasantly surprised at the work that was done and how well it was done. And I'm hoping that, you know, the trench digging will help in some way, the reduction of the flooding. Now, there's nothing we're going to do about the tide coming in, but we've got to, I guess, keep our fingers on the pulse of these places where. The water comes in, doesn't go out. And that's the biggest issue that I'm sure it's not just here, it's in other low line counties. I guess our biggest issue is down in Mr. Bazani's district and down in Guinea. And anything we can do, keep trying to keep the ditches dug regardless of what's there. And figuring out in places where we can get water out faster, that would be, that would help these citizens. I know we have had the luck of not having had any hurricanes this year here, but we have had a lot of significantly higher than expected high tides. In many cases, water never left the roads in Guinea. And it's important because, you know, buses do trans go through those areas and that's a big issue if they can't see the edges. So again, you know, I think this is not the end of the story, it's just the end of the beginning. And I think we really have to figure out in the future beyond this term of 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 us, what's going to happen with places like Guinea and other areas. There's also that road, Almond Road Road, at least they have ways of coming in and out. But many people in Guinea don't have an alternative way out if the water gets high. For example, the utilities were working on a. Problem with the the sewage line in Marius. And the tide came in, they pumped out several hundred thousand gallons of water and it's still flooded. And they had to wait till the tide left to be able to fix that pipe. The sewage pipe and that included removing a fair amount of sewage, raw sewage from the company that is serviced by that line, so yeah. The second thing is with regard to the paving, those roads look great, but one of the constituents expressed concern. How is it determined when a road like T C Walker, which which looked great to me, is now paved? When we have other roads that are in severe need of similar paving? I mean, who makes that final decision when that road gets paved?
Sure, so that we have maps that show the actual, the ratings of those roads. Anything below a sixty, I believe it is, is what's deemed as poor or extremely poor. It's red, it lights up on a map. Obviously, those are the low hanging fruit. In terms of deciding which roads get paved, it's a multifaceted. Decision making process based on what's the actual A D T of the road, how many vehicles are traveling that road? What the what the rating of the road is, what what's the level of the funding that is currently allocated? And then also something that I'm I'm passionate about. The geographic location of the roads, I think, is important, you know, trying to group those roads in a geographic location as best as possible. You're never going to be able to do that. And the reason for that is you get better pricing from contractors. Obviously, if you have a road road that you're paving up on the northern end of Gloucester County or or in Essex, and then you have one down at the point, it's going to cost a lot more money. To move their equipment and the road is going to cost it that they're going to, the bids are going to reflect that. So try very hard to group those routes in in a geographic area that makes sense. It also helps with future planning purposes, so if I can have a a. Zone that we're paving, I know that in that zone or that subdivision, if we paved all those roads, that. We we don't have to get back to that zone until ten years, twelve years, whatever it may be. And you can work methodically and systematically around the area paving as opposed to just cherry picking routes.
Right, I yeah, I know one of the big roads that we've talked about is Aberdeen Creek. The volume of traffic that is on that road well past Eva Carter's Cove where a lot of people go. So I know it's on the plan for.
It is.
A number of things, but I think the asphalting would be something that would really help that road. And that's just one of our roads that, you know, off Hickory Fork gets a lot of, lot of.
And Aberdeen Creek, I don't know if it's this upcoming year or the following.
I think it's two year, you told me it was two years for asphalting.
Yeah.
But the the patchwork is okay, but they're there all the time patching. I guess my last issue, this is not to increase Mr. Gibson's business, but when I bring up the flashy lights. There are places along seventeen that, you know, people have asked me, you know, why can't there be a flashy light at some of these intersections? Where, you know, it could be like the Crew Road where you could have flashing yellow during certain times of the year to avoid that. Because, you know, across the river, some of the flashing level, yellow lights there are under major roads like in York County, the first, second light, you come across a third light. Is that the new library? And that's a flashing yellow. And so I'm not sure what could be done for some of the roads along here. And again, I am very concerned about accidents and appreciate what was done for Crew Road because that is a pretty bad intersection. But again, I'm not, I'm for safety and not for increasing Mr. Gibson's business at times, but just to recognize that there's, you know, possible. You know, help in other 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 lights.
Yes, sir, and I did want to mention that they did assess, and I think it was twenty nineteen. All of the signals along seventeen and Gloucester and the ones that did not have a a yield condition currently. That did meet the criteria, which again is site distance and lane configuration. A lot of times, if if you have two left turning lanes, you can't have a flashing yellow just because you can't see past that that vehicle. But the intersections that were recommended were Providence, Crew, Lafayette Heights, Camp Oke and Cannon Way in twenty nineteen. The rest of them didn't meet that criteria at that time. That that didn't already have it. Before.
I'll keep on asking the question.
Okay.
But thank you, I appreciate that.
Any more questions from Mr. McKnight? All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a brief overview. Of department strategic planning process and completed plans.
Good evening, gentlemen of the board, it's good to talk to you again. I wanted to give you a brief update on the work that's being done in and with the departments to enhance our operations. So while Trish is doing that, I do want to give some special thanks to the staff and leadership. Of the Parks, Rec and Tourism Department, Community Engagement and Public Information and Emergency Management. As well as Benji Shackelford, our Intrepid Safety Officer for the county and schools. For the effort and time they all devoted to the creation of the plans that you'll hear about tonight. Thank you. So for this presentation, I want to talk just very briefly about the purpose and function of the department plans. The connection of the plans to our board's strategic priorities. The standard plan format, just to give you a flavor of what's incorporated. And then I'll give you an individual goal example from each of the plans that have already been completed. And then talk a little bit about next steps. So the purpose and function of these plans, it's actually threefold. Essentially, it's to connect the department mission, goals and operations to the broader priorities of the county. So we have that seamless strategic connection across the organization. Also, it's to create a roadmap for department effectiveness, a way that we can look at how well the operations are occurring and how we can make improvements. And along with that, allow for the assessment of department efforts. As you'll see, each of the plans incorporate key performance indicators and metrics that allow us to actively and critically evaluate the work we do. Another side benefit is actually giving more life and relevance to the existing K P I's, the key performance indicators that we already have in place within the budget document. So as you already know, these are the strategic priorities that the board has looked at and talked about in the recent past. And essentially, the organizational departments have the most direct connection to and potential impact on the highlighted priorities. So diverse, thriving economy, efficient and impactful governance and services, safe and healthy community, and then rich cultural, recreational and historical resources. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't also mention that aside from our great partnership with the schools. High quality education is also a function of the work of the library. The library is one of our most prolific providers of early literacy education, early literacy for youth. So they set the table for youth to have success academically once they get into the school district. Each of the plans include these main components. Vision, mission, and these are departmental vision and mission, departmental goals, the strategies and activities we utilize to achieve those goals. And then metrics that allow us to evaluate against those goals. Plans are intended to be a high level strategic overview. You'll notice that from the plans that we've incorporated, they're not supposed to be the kitchen sink, they're supposed to be that high level overview that lets you know where we're trying to get for the next three to five years. And then, of course, each department creates annual action plans that help them contribute to the attainment of those goals for that specific year. So it's not going to be something that includes everything. So with that, I do want to point out the four different plans, the plans actually begin on page three eleven of your packet. Three of the four are incorporated and then the final one, the safety plan, the substance is completed, but we're just beautifying it for public consumption at this point, so that was not included. So the first plan is community engagement and public information. And again, I gave you an example of one goal to talk about from each of these. With this one, it's about enhancing engagement and awareness of our services and programs for all of our residents through our various communication tools and methods. So looking holistically at how we can better communicate with our public. So how do we achieve this? What are our strategies and activities? Obviously, P S A's, press releases, using social media, posting county videos, distributing our print and digital peripherals such as the Beehive and e newsletters. And then how do we measure our success against that? So we look primarily at social media reach, the number of unique views we have for our various posts. And then the number of unique individuals reached as well as the number of collective individuals.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ryan, I was, I'm just curious. I mean, every time I go to the. Gloucester County Public Television site, I'm always watching the January tenth meeting of the school board. Is there any other school board meetings that we've missed that continues to watch that particular? Meeting, what's so special about that meeting?
I don't, I doubt there's anything particularly special about that one. I don't, I doubt there's anything particularly special about that one. I know our staff are working hard to upgrade and update and create viable schedules for the PEG channel, so there's a nicer loop of different programming.
The channel for the schools versus the channel for the county, so I'm not sure.
Just the county channel. Public television number forty-seven, forty-six, sometimes they're both broadcasted at the same time.
Yeah, that's some, definitely something, sir, that we're keeping, we're trying to keep fresh and put additional programming on there. All right, next example is emergency management. One of the things I like about this goal is it actually builds the strategies into it. There's different ways you can frame goal statements, and this is how they selected. But basically, one of the principal foundational purposes for emergency management is preparedness, is to lead emergency preparation efforts. So fundamental to these efforts is providing training and knowledge and skill development opportunities for volunteers, residents, internal staff, and regional partners. So some of the metrics we look at to assess that, number of community presentations provided, as well as the number of folks participating in those, number of cert volunteers trained, as well as the number of hours they provide as volunteers, number of internal trainings provided, as well as number of internal participants, and then, of course, the number of residents who are signed up for our notification system, Be Alert. Next, Park Rec and, Parks, Rec and Tourism. The goal is to provide innovative programming to respond to the needs of the community. Strategies for that, and obviously baked into this goal, there's a lot of evaluative activities, so we need to know what the needs of the community are in order to provide those. So part of the strategies include leveraging existing best practices through NRPA, the National Recreation and Park Association, programmatic statistics that we get regularly. We have a really, obviously, a really robust registration system that we can utilize for stats. And then, of course, regular community feedback through our satisfaction surveys and programmatic surveys to provide relevant and desired programming information. And then the metrics for that, number of unique programs provided, total number of program participants, and then a community engagement or feedback metric. And again, that can be discerned through our surveys. And then finally, the one strategic plan we've done so far that encompassed one individual, Benji Shackelford. The goal is to regularly review, evaluate, and address the likelihood of incidents within county facilities to protect staff from and/or minimize the impact, both to staff and then fiscally to the organization, of injury. Strategies include conducting risk assessments to evaluate the severity and likelihood of any incidents that may occur. And that incorporates, of course, looking at the different facilities and making sure that they're safe, that things aren't left out in offices that people can trip over, things like that. And that's something Benji does regularly. Potential metrics for that, number of new incidents each fiscal year, with the goal, of course, being a reduction over time, and then percent, percent of county facilities evaluated at least twice per year for potential hazards, things that are more infrastructure-related that we can easily deal with. So those are just some brief examples of the plans that have been completed. Again, you have those, the three plans in front of you, with the exception of the safety plan. So next steps related to this, continue to work with departments to create their individual strategic plans, make certain that department strategic plan goals continue to align with the overarching strategic priorities, and then, of course, continue to flesh out the county's overarching strategic plan as a guiding document for the departments and as a roadmap for the county organization. And I will open it up to any questions. My presentation was just that good? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
If, if I can, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank Mr. Wright for his work on, on this project. This is something that's been talked about for years, and he is going through department by department, working with the staff, and, and again, this will all sort of come together into the plan that you all will be working on too. So really appreciate the extra effort that, on getting this done.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment period. If you would like to come forward and talk about anything other than what's on the two public hearings, please come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Joanne Hamlin, and I don't know what magisterial district I'm in. I'm sorry, this is the first time I've done this. But I wanted to, to address the board supervisors about the possibility, the need and consideration by the board for establishing an off, off-leash dog park in Gloucester. And I have a little history to go with that. So on September, then I'm going to read most of this, if that's okay, because I'm nervous. So.
Could you, I'll hold this against you. I think they want you to put the mic down a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Everyone wants to hear.
Sorry, I don't talk really well. Okay. So on September ninth, I visited Ark Park with my beagle Charlie. We go there often to walk and socialize with other dog owners. And when I arrived on this morning in September, Charlie and I walked around the backfields with the leash on, hockey and soccer fields. Then we came back to the fenced area where other dogs in what we call our pack would soon be arriving to play ball and run off-leash, okay? But we found that the gates had been removed, so off-leash would be out of the question. And when we called Parks and Rec to ask why, we were told that there had been complaints regarding damaged base markers and dog poop on the field, and that dog owners were not properly cleaning up after their pets. And we were told that the gates would not be reinstalled, but that we could still access the area if our dogs were kept on a leash. So I want you to think for a minute about that response. So the problem being, the dogs supposedly are tearing up base markers and pooping on the field, and dog owners are irresponsible because they're not cleaning up after their dogs. And their solution is to remove the gates. So dogs can still play in the area as long as they're on leash. Also, any wild animals, stray domestic animals, et cetera, can come and go without restriction. I still can't understand how removing the gates to the ballfield solves the stated problem, okay? So I'd like to challenge the claim of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism on their website. They say they have something for everyone, but they do not have a place in Gloucester where dogs can be taken off-leash to run and play and socialize with other dogs. And if you're a dog owner, you know what I mean and how important that is. Off-leash dog parks provide this for the dogs, and as an added bonus, dog owners can meet and socialize as well. So Ark Park is publicly accessible, and our dogs have not caused harm to the park or others. We ensure to clean up after them and leave the area as we found it. I've been using this park with my dog Charlie for two years, and others have been visiting for an even longer period. So we believe it's important to maintain access to a fenced and gated area for off-leash exercise. If reinstallation of the gates at Ark Park is not feasible, there's plenty of county land available that could possibly be fenced and dedicated as an off-leash dog park. There are off-leash parks in many cities and towns throughout Virginia that are operating successfully. For example, Williamsburg, Virginia Beach, Hampton, Norfolk, Kilmarnick, Little Kilmarnick, and Warsaw. I have information from two of the park managers in Williamsburg that have fenced off-leash parks. Alistair Parkinson is Parks Administrator of Veterans Park in Williamsburg, and she states in her, in her text to me that the benefits have been great, as it has allowed folks with limited space to bring their dogs to play. The park sees heavy use, and we have identified areas in several other parks for future off-leash areas. And then Nathaniel Darling, he's the Waller Mill Park Manager in Williamsburg, he said this is a great place where your dog can run off-leash and play in a large fenced area during park hours. So what we're asking is that this might be considered by the Board of Commissioners or Parks and Rec or wherever it has to go, to make a reality in Gloucester County of a, of a ballpark or a park somewhere that's fenced, and dogs can come with their owners for off-leash play and exercise. There's a lot of studies that prove that that's really good for dogs and really good for their owners, and really good for tourists that might come with nowhere, nowhere except a hotel room. And so if they have a park that they can go to, that would be a beneficial thing to tourism. Thank you for whoever brought that tourism thing up, because that's a good point. Sorry. That is absolutely the end of it. I did have some handouts, but I didn't know I needed to make copies about the comments from the other.
Ms. Hamlin.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to come up for citizen comment?
Good evening. I'll try to keep to three minutes. My name is Helen Haverilla. I have been a Gloucester resident for two years now. I love Gloucester County. I plan to retire here, and I'm in support of the dog park. And I'm also, I have a letter from another citizen who was unable to attend and feels the same way I do. So I'll just read this message from her. Dear members of the Gloucester Board of Supervisors, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to encourage the board to explore the possibility of establishing a dog park in Gloucester County for the benefit of local residents and their furry companions. As our community continues to grow, and it is, it is clear that our residents are looking for safe, accessible, and engaging spaces to enjoy outdoor activities with their pets. A dedicated dog park would provide a much-needed area where dogs can run, socialize, and exercise off-leash in a controlled environment. Additionally, such a space would offer a variety of community benefits, including improved quality of life. A dog park would provide healthy outlet for pets to exercise and socialize, helping to reduce behavioral issues caused by lack of activity and stimulation. Encouragement of outdoor activity, the park would serve as a space for people to get outdoors, meet neighbors, and enjoy the natural beauty of Gloucester County while spending quality time with their pets. Support for local businesses, a dog park could draw visitors to the area, creating a positive economic impact for local businesses by attracting dog owners and families. Community building, dog parks are often social hubs where pet owners can connect with one another, fostering a sense of community and prompting inclusivity. Possible source of revenue, residents whose dogs are registered and are up to date with their vaccinations can purchase an annual use pass through the county. Entry could be gained through a pass code entry or magnetic card, which would be updated annually. Many nearby communities, as Ms. Hamlin mentioned, have already seen positive effects of dog parks, and I believe that such a facility would greatly enhance the appeal and livability of Gloucester County. Whether it's fully fenced park with separate areas for large and small dogs or a smaller, more informal space, there are many options to consider. I would be happy to assist with any further research and community outreach efforts to explore this idea in more depth. I sincerely hope the board would consider this proposal and look forward to seeing the potential benefits of a dog park that, that could bring to our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm confident that such an initiative would be valuable addition to our county. And this is written by Amanda Adams. She lives at seventy-two eight-nine Edghill Street, and I live off six-nine-eight-one Motley Landing Drive off Main Street, and I love this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
The problem is that we were there with our dogs.
Would you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Gary Wiesner. I live at, I'm in, I live by Ark Park. And we take our dogs there. We're there only until like noon. When somebody shows up, we courtesy leave. We have been doing this. We pick up after our dogs. We pick up after other dogs because we wanted to keep the place open. Right now, it's not being used by anybody. They opened all the gates so that no dogs can go in there without a leash. I have a dog that's this big. He needs to run. I can't let him off the leash because he'll go right to seventeen because of all the noise. And we just like, you know, it would be nice if we could be there, at least in the winter time when there's nobody there. That would be at least nice. But they opened all the gates, all the gates. There's no gate there that isn't open. And it's just, in my opinion, it's for spite. That's the only way I can see it. Y'all have a good Christmas.
Thank you. You too. Would anyone else like to speak during citizen comment?
How y'all doing tonight? Rick Kidd, I live in Hayes, right down from Abington Park, which they did the same thing at Abington and went out on September ninth. Been taking my dog there for four years. No gates, couldn't let him go. Had to rearrange my whole lifestyle because of this. I feel like they could have let someone know, because I, I know the Parks and Rec guys, they just, all of a sudden, they were gone. At four o'clock on Fridays, there was a park there. We had a whole group that meets there, and now we're meeting at someone's backyard. So sure would appreciate some consideration. And I feel like Page, there's a baseball field already there. All it needs is a few repairs to the fence. You could put a park right there, it'd be done in two weeks. Could have this taken care of. So I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, kid. Would anyone else like to come and speak? Mr. Cronin, you have one letter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is from Mr. Keegan Montroy from the Ware District. Hello, my name is Keegan Montroy. I believe that there is a need for more successful and well-thought-out events in our county. I know there may be an issue due to space, but I propose using the county property of Old Page Middle School as a fairgrounds. This would bring more money into the county and make good use of county property. This also gives the people of the county more things to do. Please really think and consider this. I think it would be a great idea and would benefit our county greatly. If you have any questions on my ideas, as I have experience in this, please feel free to contact me. Thank you for your time. Those were the only comments. submitted.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Christina Martin, and I'm speaking for Otis. He's my lab puppy, and we also frequented Ark Park, and it was, it was fun. I got to meet all those lovely people there, so I'd ask if you guys would think about that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay. Now we'll open up our public hearings. We have two for tonight. The first one is a public hearing to amend zoning map to reclassify five-point-oh-two acres in York District from RC one rural countryside to SC one suburban countryside. Mr. Cronin, has this been properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just wait for the PowerPoint to come up. So as Mr. Hudson indicated, this is rezoning for the Baldwin family, Z twenty-four oh-two. The property is located at forty-four eighty-seven A. It's owned by Eric and Christie Baldwin. It's located at six-oh-three-six Brayburn Lane, which is a private road, and it's surrounded by Machikamiko State Park. It currently contains two residential units, one primary dwelling and one accessory dwelling. And the surrounding uses are essentially Machikamiko State Park and the Cedar Bush Creek. The zoning is an interesting background. The current zoning for the property is RC one, and many of you that are on the board will recall that we rezoned the state park property, I think, three times since the initial rezoning. It was rezoned for a planned unit development, and then it was later rezoned for a more typical type of subdivision. And then finally, it was rezoned for the state park. It had to actually be rezoned for the park because the proffers indicated did not allow park use. But a park is a permitted use in the suburban countryside district. It was just that the proffers associated with the rezoning would not allow that. would not allow that. So the proposed rezoning is to be suburban countryside consistent with the surrounding area. It's intended to permit the property to be subdivided for a family transfer and to allow two parcels to be on that. The RC1 requires a minimum lot size of five acres, where the suburban countryside would allow for two-acre lots. So just go through the staff analysis. The comprehensive plan talks about this area being suburban countryside, which is consistent with the current zoning, with the exception of this parcel. It's in within the development district. The idea for suburban countryside is a moderate suburban residential development. Historically, this property was used for farm, the Timberneck Farm, and when the county did the countywide rezoning, anything that was currently used for agriculture was zoned for agriculture. But in the comprehensive plan, this area was intended to be moderate density residential. The transportation impacts are pretty limited. Again, it's on a private road. Other than a family transfer, you really couldn't subdivide this any further. There are more than three lots of dwelling units on that road. There are currently two existing structures. Each would be allowed to have an accessory structure if it was subdivided, but there are limitations with RPA and other areas, you know, setback areas, so that might be a concern. So again, this kind of goes into the issue about the buildout would really only allow 20 additional trips if they also added accessory dwellings. VDOT reviewed it, and they had no concerns regarding the proposal. Again, it's a private road that goes into the state park road. We did receive comments from the DCR at State Park, and they were concerned slightly about the potential for uses. However, RC1 would allow more intensive uses than the suburban countryside. Probably the most intensive use would be a home occupation for like a landscaping company or something like that. There is an existing right-of-way easement. I believe that right-of-way easement has to be renegotiated with the State Park. When the original subdivision came in, they moved the easement, but that was never finalized. So that will need to be done, but that's between the State Park and the property owners. According to the assessor, the rezoning might reduce the value of the property and create additional home site for the new lot. Both lights, both properties will contain apartment dwellings, so only additional home sites would be accessory dwelling on each parcel. And without more specifics, the assessor felt like you really couldn't determine what the impacts would be mainly based on the lot size and how much waterfront property each parcel would have. Again, the environmental impacts, the property is along Cedar Bush Creek. The property owners did put a living shoreline along that, and that was approved several years ago, in 2011. And so they will be impacted by RPA, so there'll probably be limited opportunities for additional development, but that would all be assessed if they wanted to do that. Currently, they don't have any plans for putting additional development, but these are just the maximum impacts that we would look at. Again, they would also have to, you know, have their primary and reserve drain fields. They currently do have, each has their own drain field, and there are two wells on the site, so that would all be evaluated during the subdivision for the family transfer. So the staff comments and recommendations. Again, the property is five acres, and it's currently unable to be subdivided. When the property owners contacted us about the rezoning, and again, looking at that, it's the only lot in the area that's zoned RC1, we felt that the board would be able to consider the rezoning it to be consistent with the surrounding uses, and therefore would allow the family transfer to occur if that happened. So again, staff recommends to the planning commission that we, that the planning commission forwarded to you with a recommendation for approval. The planning commission did so with these, these recommendations, which I'm not going to read to you, but it basically is consistent with the comp plan and supports, you know, having development in the development district, and would allow the family transfer, which would allow the family members to be in proximity to each other. The planning commission followed our recommendation and proposed recommending it to the board with a recommendation for approval. They did discuss the issues raised by DCR and felt that that was really not a land use issue. And then they voted unanimously to forward it to you with a recommendation for approval, with the following vote and two members absent. The applicant is here. She's willing to answer any questions, but she doesn't have a presentation, so if you'd like her to answer any questions, she is here to do that. Otherwise, that's the end of my presentation.
Ms. Resami. Ms. Deuce Ortiz, remind me again what the minimum lot size for SC1 would be?
It's two acres.
Two acres. You can't go less than that?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you can in a cluster development. So if you did a cluster development, like the Patriots Walk development, where you can go down to 30 square feet, but you have to, the overall density is, I always forget that.
So we talked about cluster developments last time and changed the language in our new zoning. So this is a possibility that a cluster development?
There's no way they, not for two-lot subdivision, you can do a cluster.
All right, let's, what we'll do is we'll open up citizen comment period, and then if there's any questions after that. So if anyone would like to come and speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and magisterial district. All right, we'll close the citizen comment period. Any questions for staff or the property owner? Okay. There's an ordinance on page 331.
Motion to approve.
All right. Ms. Steel, will you poll the board?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is a public hearing to amend zoning map to reclassify 10.65 acres Gloucester Point District from B2 Village Mixed Use to B1 General Business. Ms. Deuce Ortiz.
This is another one that you're very familiar with, and so I'll just go through a recap and then land use guidance and the comparison between the B2 and the B1. So the subject parcel is, was rezoned from B3 Office Business to RMX Residential Mixed Use in 2016. If you recall, we removed the B3 from the zoning ordinance because it was zoned Office Business. It only allowed offices, and we were having a lot of rezonings from Office Business to B1 General Business. The rezoning for RMX was to develop a multifamily apartment community consisting of 24 to 30-town homes, style apartments, and 78 to 96 garden apartments. So the board approved that rezoning with the following rationale. The proposed RMX rezoning was consistent with the comprehensive plan's desire for village-scale mixed-use development within the area designated as Gloucester Point Hayes Village Development Plan as mixed-use village area. And the idea was to create a pedestrian-friendly use associated with the York River Crossing Shopping Center. So even though this was a residential use, it was kind of created a mixed-use development. So along with the recommendation to approve the zoning ordinance update, the planning commission recommended that this parcel, which was formerly zoned RMX, to be zoned B2, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it was also consistent with the Gloucester Point Hayes Village Development Plan and the history of the property for residential use. At the planning commission's, well, at the board's September 3rd meeting, the board approved the zoning ordinance update, which included this property to be rezoned from RMX to B2. But the property owner had requested that the property be zoned to B1. And rather than hold up the whole zoning ordinance update with regard to re-advertising, the board agreed through their motion to remove this from the countywide rezoning and to consider this separately with the planning commission. So that's, it went back to the planning commission as a county-sponsored rezoning. With the, the current zoning, again, is in blue. That's RMX. The light blue is currently the B2 zoning, and now that RMX is B2 zoning. And then surrounding is a single family, and then the B1 is the red. If you recall, the property was cleared for development. When it was first approved for development, before, it was actually zoned RMX. It was approved as a office development, and it was cleared under an approved site plan for clearing, and has remained cleared since that time. The comprehensive plan talks about this area as being village-mixed-use area, and then surrounded by suburban countryside. And the village-mixed-use areas are regions or newly planned areas that can support commercial and residential development in a pedestrian-oriented and village-scale environment. And it allows relatively high residential densities and commercial uses with pedestrian-oriented improvements such as streetlights, sidewalks, cross, and crosswalks. The village area, we also have the Gloucester Point Hayes Village area, and that, the comprehensive plan refers to that for more specifics. So this area, the red area is the core area, and that's the area that's supposed to be the higher-density areas in the comprehensive plan, the very, the gathering areas for the community and with open space and the heart of the traditional neighborhood community, much the same as a Main Street in the courthouse area. And then the traditional areas are supposed to be between the traditional development and then the higher-density. And so those areas are meant to divide the active, highly commercial core area from the quieter residential areas. And the transitional areas primarily residential, but can be made up with more intensive residential uses such as apartments, condominiums, and townhomes. So that's where the RMX came into being, and then that became the B2 zoning. On page 389 in your packet, we actually listed all the permitted uses in the B1 and B2. There are a lot of uses that are similar between the two, including retail. Some uses not permitted in the B2 include drive-through restaurants, convenience stores, indoor shooting ranges, and mostly auto-related uses. And then in the B1, we don't allow residential uses. So those are the main differences. Staff didn't make a recommendation because as part of the comprehensive rezoning, we had recommended this to be B2 because that was the idea that RMX would become B2, which we feel is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Also, most uses are permitted in B1. That would be like retail and other types of uses. But we also, you know, the idea was to make it more pedestrian-friendly, and so like things like auto-related and drive-through uses are not permitted in the B2, which we felt was more consistent with the comp plan. The other thing, there's no proffers or any prohibitions on any uses permitted. Without knowing what the use is, we really couldn't evaluate any of the impacts. So right now, the applicant has indicated they have no intent or idea what they want to do with the property. So the planning commission held their public hearing. Mr. Subtle was present and again requested the B1 zoning. And in a split vote of four to two with two absent, three to, excuse me, two absences, they voted to continue to leave the property as B2. So that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions.
So Ms. Ortiz, what does the property owner intend to do with this, other than saying I want it to be B1 for some future use that we won't either like, or like, or not like?
The property owner's representative's here, and I believe he's planning to speak during the public comment. But at the planning commission, he said that they currently don't have any use, that they just felt it was more consistent with the York River Crossing Shopping Center, the B1.
Usually when we do these rezonings, we know what's going on with the property. And I don't think it's the right thing to do right now to rezone something where we don't know what's going in there. So I'm not certain that I'm going to approve this.
All right. Any more questions for Ms. Deuce Ortiz? Mr. Gibson?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ortiz, thank you for your presentation. I just want to make sure I understand. B1, no residential development would be permitted. Is that correct?
We do allow accessory residential to, like if you had a commercial store, you could have an accessory residential, but not a primary. So a house, apartments, those would not be permitted.
But it would be permitted under B2?
Correct.
And B2 is consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Correct. So B2, the current density with RMX was 16 units per acre, and they have an approved plan under that. But with the new zoning, it's eight units per acre that they would be allowed to do. And they could also do retail and other uses, commercial uses.
Ms. Resami.
So, so I ask the question again. Would we be setting a precedent by rezoning this property without knowing what's going to be built there? Usually when we rezone properties, we know exactly what's going in there.
Correct.
So we don't know today
And that was
what is going in there. Tattoo parlor, you know, another gas station, perhaps some things that maybe the citizens may object to because it is B1. I don't understand why we are going to approve something where we don't know what the use is going to be for this piece of property. And I don't understand why the planning commission approved this in the first place.
They recommended against it.
Okay. Well, then I, then I would agree with the planning commission that we don't approve this.
All right, let's open up the citizen comment period. If you'd like to come forward, state your name, magisterial district. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Raymond Subtle, Jr. I'm an attorney with Kaufman &amp; Canelles in the Newport News office, and I represent the property owner. The property owner also owns the shopping center to the north, which adjoins the property, as B1. Just to give you a little bit of background, there was a plan to develop a mixed-use residential on this parcel. Economically, it didn't work. The construction costs were just too high, and you wouldn't be able to rent the units. When the property owner found out that the county was initiating the countywide plan, they looked at and said, well, if the zoning's going to be changed, what's the best zoning to make it compatible with our adjoining property, the shopping center? Because the, when this property is developed, if and when it's developed, it will, it will be more than likely an extension of the shopping center. So we didn't really initiate the zoning change. The county did. And that's why we don't have any plan. So when we found out that the county was making a countywide plan, we said, well, if you're going to make a change, let's do the best change that we can have. The residential deal is not going to work. So we asked that it be changed to B1, to be compatible with the shopping center. And as you could see from the, from the pictures, it's all surrounded by the red, the B1. So in September, when we came, we asked for that. But because there was a advertising requirement, we did not want to hold up the countywide rezoning because it had been tremendous amount of effort, work by staff, by the citizens. We said, okay, we're not going to hold up your countywide rezoning. We'll go ahead and let that happen, and then you passed the resolution saying that you would sponsor this application. So the point is, is that, yes, we do not have a plan, but you shouldn't expect us to have a plan because we didn't initiate the zoning. The county did, and we tried to cooperate with the county. We had some legal requirements on advertising that we couldn't make the change prior to it. We didn't want to slow down, which I think it, the big plan had taken, I don't know, maybe over a year, two years, to get it all together. We said, we won't, we won't mess you up there, but let's, let's revisit this and try to make it compatible. If we're going to make a rezoning, or if the county wants it to make a rezoning, let's do it that it's compatible with the next-door property, because that's how it's going to be redeveloped. So are there, are there a lot of overlap in uses? Yes. The most notable one that I saw was the, the drive-in restaurants. And so we just think it makes sense to be, to have the same zoning as our adjoining neighboring property, which will be an extension of the shopping center with, if and when it gets developed. I'll be happy to take any questions. But that's basically the rationale that we have.
Since he does represent, does anybody have any questions for him?
I do have questions for staff when we're done with Mr. Subtle.
Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else, would anyone else like to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Crisco.
Ms. Deuce Ortiz, I have a question. This parcel is currently 10 acres, correct?
A little more, I think it's.
A little over 10 acres. If they were to subdivide this, would that have to come back before us to make this into multiple-acred parcels for development?
No, regardless of what you do, it would not, subdivision is a ministerial act, and neither B1 or B2 have minimum lot sizes.
They do. What are the minimum lot sizes for B1?
They don't. They don't.
They don't? Okay.
Because it would all depend on, there's no minimum lot sizes, but obviously you would need enough area to put your parking, whatever the use is. That would, that would kind of dictate the minimum lot size.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Gibson?
How long has the property been unused, undeveloped?
So it was 2015 rezoning. So it was 2015 rezoning, so it was approved, as long as it's, it's.
As long as it exists.
Yeah.
But it was rezoned RMX in what, in 15?
I have it. 2015. Let's see, 2016, June 7, 2016.
And I think there was a concern from the property owners in the back part of that. Remember that discussion we had?
It was a very.
There was a discussion, they were concerned about what they would see, the vistas they would see in front of their, in front of their property, along, along that back line.
The same property owner developed all of that, even the houses behind it.
I understand that, but now the residents may have a concern about what's going, they're going to see the back of a shop somewhere, or whatever is going to go back there, they're going to see dumpsters and things like that, like they see in the food line we have here. So I still say, let's not set a precedent here by, by rezoning something where we don't know what's going in it yet.
And I will say, we always intended, if you recall, in the six-year process of doing the zoning ordinance update, the RMX was always going to be B2 because we decided not to have two different, a residential and a mixed-use. So that's why staff recommended the B2. And I did contact Mr. Freeman to let him know because he had vested rights in the, the current plan is good till 2025 for the RMX subdivision that he was going to do. And he has no plans to develop that, but I just wanted to let him know that, you know, if we rezone this, you're going to not, you know, be able to develop it that way.
I'm not saying we will never rezone that to B1, but if, if the property owner has an idea to go in there, then let's rezone it to, to, you know, facilitate the property owner's use for that property. But if we don't know what's going in there, I don't think it's a prudent thing to do right now until they decide, hey, we want to put maybe a strip shop in there, do they want to put a strip shop in there, do they want to put some extension to, I don't know. Just let us know what they're going to put in there. That's, we're going to set a precedent here by rezoning something where we don't know what the ultimate use is going to be.
Dr. Wirth? But if we rezoned it regardless, depending on what goes in there, we would know from the site plan what's there. We would have some opportunity to comment on that, correct?
Not at the board level, no. As long as it meets the site plan requirements, which really just, you know, parking minimum.
The same thing with B2. They could do anything they want based on what's available, allowable, but B2.
Which is why I included that list so you could actually see what the two different uses are. So we just did a comparison, but you know, there is a list of permitted uses. And again, without going through each one, the biggest ones are high, you know, like you, we don't allow auto dealerships in B2. We don't allow drive-through restaurants in B2. The idea is for it to be more pedestrian oriented. So those are the biggest things, you know, B1 is general business. And as you recall from the plan, we're trying to make Gloucester Point more of a village. That's our intent.
But did you say the staff did not make a recommendation?
We didn't make a, specifically on this application because we, we recommended the B2 by getting rid of the RMX. RMX was becoming B2. So we did make a recommendation for B2. That was a recommendation with the zoning ordinance update, and that continues to be our recommendation because that is consistent with the comp plan and the Hayes, Gloucester Point Hayes Village Plan.
Mr. Chair, so I heard the gentleman earlier say that they didn't make this request, that the county did. So explain that to me.
So it's a six-year process, you remember if you recall, but with the zoning ordinance update. So we created RMX for this property to be developed. So we had always intended for the village to have more housing at the point and in the courthouse. So that was part of the two village plans. So when Mr. Freeman was interested in changing his development from office to residential, we fast-paced the RMX zoning district. At the same time, we were trying to work on all the other zoning ordinance, but we fast-paced RMX. And so when we did the entire ordinance, we got rid of RMX and made it, we created the B2, which allowed, like currently B2, the old B2 didn't allow residential. The new B2 allows residential. So, so even though we initiated it, the idea was that RMX was becoming B2. And RMX was going away throughout, that, that literally is the only property in the county that was owned, RMX, which we created so that Mr. Freeman could move forward with his, his proposal. So it was initiated by the county, but there's a long history to it.
Mr. Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this change, and I would echo Mr. Bizani's comments, that it's premature to consider this zoning change when there are no plans presented for, for the property. I think the most telling statement is on page 386 of our packet, the comments of the staff. In the absence of any concrete plans to develop this property, staff sees no reason to change the current B2 zoning, as it should be assumed to be correct. The properties, the current zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There is a need for some residential development in Gloucester Point. It's consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. The planning commission recommends against it. I, I think we would all be open to changing this zoning with some concrete proposals for why the zoning needs to change for a particular type of development. But in the absence of that, I think it would be premature to make a zoning change.
Dr. Wirth?
Yeah. I'm sort of torn. On the one hand, you know, we try to be business friendly. And on the other hand, I'm certainly responsive to the fact that we have a number of board members that have said, hey, you know, without a concrete plan. So I'm kind of leaning towards saying no. I would like to see what would happen with that property because it went from RMX to B2 because economic issues prevented it from becoming RMX. But the economy changes regularly, and I'd like to think that they would be responsible business owners to come up with the right plan. I think we see that happening in Fox Mill. You know, what happens at Fox Mill is done, I think purposely with conditions that are driven by economics, that I think in this particular situation, I would like to think that there would be a plan for this, that we would recognize a need to go from B2 to B1. And I'm most likely going to vote no on this particular proposal.
I understand my fellow board members' points of view. However, this was changed to RMX, didn't work out. We renamed RM, or we put RMX in the B2. There's no other contiguous B2 to this property. That's my concern. What are the setbacks for B1 for development? There's got to be a setback to.
So that's, you know, the highway corridor says a 50-foot front yard setback, there are no side or rear yard setbacks.
No side or rear setback.
Now, there is, this is where I get into zoning, when you're adjacent to a residential district, there is a buffer requirement, which includes a setback. It could be as small as five feet with a fence and evergreens, or as much as 30 feet. So there is, when you have a non-residential use.
Is that, is that ministerial as well, or is that?
It's all ministerial, yeah. It's in the ordinance. So as long as you meet the zoning ordinance.
Ms. Ducey Ortiz, I don't, I don't eat and breathe the zoning ordinance like you do, so I don't remember all this stuff. That's why I'm asking the questions. But for that reason, knowing that we have capable staff that can take care of this situation, I'm of a mindset to approve it because the rest of the property that they own and have developed, minus the housing development, which they also developed, that's behind this and along the side of it, I think it makes it a cleaner and better-looking proposal for them.
Well, you know, I see your point of view, and that's why I'm sort of torn between, you know, what I think is logic to have a piece of property that is adjacent and developable as B1. But on the other hand, there's no other plan for it. And at the time that we get a plan, we would probably approve it without any, you know, question, given the way we like to do what we can do for businesses in this county.
January 1, there's a lot of things that are changing when it comes to commercial lending for these types of developments where you have different requirements to go after that money for a commercial real estate. I would think that if they had a plan, they would probably, if they were even considering a plan to do anything other than continue to mow it for the next 20 years at this point in time, that you would probably be trying to get that done prior to the start of the year. Would be my guess.
Mr. Nikozia?
I, I looked at it, looking at it a little bit different. I listen to everybody, but I look at it as a, as a sellable feature. Now, the gentleman that owns it, owns it now. But let's say 20 years from now, he wants to sell it all. For me, I think it all needs to be zoned the same way for future sale, or somebody come along and want to buy it. Because what's going to happen is, you'll leave it alone, and I come along, I just use myself, I come along and I offer him something he can't refuse, and then here we are again. I think, like Mr. Crisco said, I think they're going to mow it for the next 20 years. But for future investment, I, I think it would be good to have it all the same.
Well, having listened to it from the first time it was rezoned to RMX, and at the advice of counsel, when we decided to pull this off of the agenda in the September meeting and move it to B2. Although they wanted it done, they were gracious enough to let us move it and do a public hearing to potentially rezone it. I've looked at it, at the planning commission, and now, and originally. I look at it from two different points of view. One, I think planning commission, or the planning department did the right thing in zoning the B2 because it more aligned with RMX, and it gave them the same options of what they were going to have then if they changed it. By moving it to B1, the county loses any kind of control or any potential ability to limit what's going in there. If we leave it at B2, it still gives them a tremendous amount of opportunity of different businesses that can go in there as it sits. The only, as Ms. Ducey Ortiz said, it just limits a few of the types of businesses, which are drive-through restaurants and that, that sort of things, and car places. So as everybody else has said, I'm a little torn. But I think that from the county's point of view, if we left it at B2, it still has a lot of opportunities. Once they develop a, a plan, they could come back and say, this is what we want to do and change it to B1. So that being said, we have two different ordinances, one on page 70, page 374, to approve the ordinance, to approve the rezoning, and an ordinance on page 376, which would deny the rezoning.
Mr. Chair? I'll make the motion that we adopt the ordinance on page 374 to approve this rezoning.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Ms. Steele?
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
No.
Mr. Nikozia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
No.
And Dr. Wirth?
No.
Motion fails. Thank you.
All right, there's ordinance on page 376 to deny it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll suck it.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
No.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikozia?
No.
Mr. Gibson?
Yeah.
Dr. Wirth?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We're going to do one presentation, and then we're going to take a break. This presentation, the fiscal year 2024 audit and resolution accepting the report of the independent auditor fiscal year 2024. Mr. Aaron Hawkins with Robinson Farmer &amp; Cox and Ms. Maria Callaway, CFO Gloucester County. Trish, Trish, next year, this needs to go in the presentations. This needs to go in presentations next year. I know, but still.
Good evening. Mr. Hawkins is our audit partner from Robinson Farmer &amp; Cox, and he is going to be providing each of you a copy of this year's audit, bound and completed. So I am here simply to introduce him and then to sit down and let him.
Hey, stop.
It's okay. I know I talk a lot. So just here to introduce Mr. Aaron Hawkins, who is providing you copies of the finalized FY24 audit. I do not have anything to preface this. I plan to come back in January to provide an update of the comparison from our unaudited results that I gave to you earlier in this fiscal year, and then give you any differences that occurred between the audit, the final audited numbers. I will be here for any questions after Mr. Hawkins provides you the information he's required to. And then there is a resolution on page 409 of your packet once you have had all your questions answered.
Since it's a clean audit, it's on page 409, right?
There weren't two, were there? Stop it, guys.
Thanks, Ted. You know, the joke is no good if you have to explain it.
I know.
Or maybe it's the audience, too.
Hi, thank you all for having me again this year. As Maria just, just said, here to present the FY24 financial statements and, and audit. And a big thank you to Maria, by the way. She does a great job in preparing for the audit and does a lot of the work in preparing this very, very, very large document. I'm going to go through kind of just some pages that I think are most maybe relevant, I guess, to talk about, and then open it up for any questions after that. So.
Before you start?
Yes, sure.
Before you start, I'd like to commend Ms. Callaway. You have influenced five of my students to become accountants. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Seriously. There aren't as many of us these days.
So they finally learned something.
I will, I will proceed. So on page one is our auditors' report, and it contains our opinion on the financial statements, which is an unmodified opinion. If it were, if it were a modified opinion, the language would be changed to say, everything's great but. So that's why we, as auditors, say an unmodified opinion. It means that this opinion is a very, it's the template, this is a good audit report template, and that's why it's unmodified. So then it's the best that we can give as auditors. There were no new accounting standards to discuss within the auditors' report this year either. The past two years, we've had fairly large new auditing standards that had to be implemented, but nothing, nothing this year in regards to new, new standards. On page five is, is the management's discussion and analysis. We call it, just for short, the MDNA. I, I always like to hone in on this because this is, this is complete, completed completely by, by finance. And, you know, the rest of these financial statements have to be presented in a certain way that is put out there by various promulgating bodies. So we can't, we have to follow what the guidelines are for how things are presented. But in this MDNA, the finance staff is able to talk about economic factors during the year, geographic factors, compare current year numbers to prior year numbers, things that wouldn't be common that you would see in these financial statements in their, in their true form. So a lot of good information is in the MDNA. Moving on to page 21, which is your fund statements. I'd like to hone in on the general fund, that's the fund that you're probably most familiar with. And that's your, the first column, is the. And that's your, the first column, is the exhibit three on page 21. And so, at the bottom, you'll see you have total fund balance of $31.2 million. Of that $31.2 million, 28.3 of that is unassigned, which means it is there at the county's discretion. It's not already being held for some committed or restricted purpose. And if we look at page 23, exhibit five, you can see the changes in your fund balance during the year. Fund balance did go down slightly. Last year was about $32.2 million, this year it's about $31.2 million. So a slight, a slight decrease in your general fund balance, but still a very healthy fund balance that the county has. I'm going to jump very far ahead in this report to the back. And so page 222, which is where you see our name, Robinson Farmer &amp; Cox, again at the, at the top of the page. And this is our report that we issue on internal control testing that we have to do, as well as state compliance work. And if we had a finding related to this work that we did on internal controls testing and state compliance work, this is where we would talk about that finding, or findings, which we do not have any findings to report and talk about. And on page 224, this is our report and our opinion on the federal compliance work that we do as part of the audit. And if we had any federal findings to report, this is where we would talk about those federal findings. And we do not have any federal findings to report based on the audit work that we did. We did issue, we did issue a separate management letter. Again, that's it for the, for the financial statements in the report. Again, I'll be glad to answer any questions. We did issue a separate management letter, just kind of, we use, we send these out every once in a while with an audit, just to talk about things that necessarily don't rise to the level of needing to be a finding or anything in our report, but just things that, hey, during the course of the audit, we noticed this control or this practice went on, these little improvement on the school board side of things, and identifying their revenue accruals. And that would be things that, like for their federal grants, you know, they've spent money through June, and they need to request reimbursement in July and August so that we get that money in. That process kind of lagged into October, and therefore, that's when we try to do the audit, is in October. And so, in doing field work, those kind of things were still going on, so it just caused a little bit of a delay. So, just wanted to put a recommendation out there to, for the school board, for when they do those year-end accruals, make sure they get those requests in, in July and August, so that they're, they're in, in a timely manner, and recorded in a timely manner. So, but all in all, it was a great audit process. Thank everyone who was involved in it. Again, Maria Callaway is fantastic, and that's all I have. So glad to answer any questions that you all have for me.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
All right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Next item on the agenda is a presentation. It's a resolution of support of Gloucester County's application for 2025 USDA Rural Business Development Grant. Matt Barber, Director of Parks and Rec and Tourism.
Yep, all right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Basically, the reason why we have this here tonight is we're looking at applying for a grant. I think the timeline's late February is when we'd actually apply for it. But part of the grant application is we need a resolution of support from the Board of Supervisors. So there's nobody really involved with this in this time, no match, anything like that that goes into it. But the purpose of this actual grant, again, it's the USDA grant for the feasibility study, and it's for right here, all the court circle buildings, the body type building, which is the museum. And basically, we want to look at how we're going to, how we're going to feasibly fund any projects we do in the future. So, we don't know quite exactly what that would look like or anything like that, and we're really hoping this grant will tell us. So, whether that's a return on investment directly from our end, or it's, you know, economic impact for Main Street, for the county, anything like that, and we're really hoping that this grant can guide us. So, if anybody has any questions, I don't know if everybody's read through the resolution, but.
So, I'm always apprehensive of the government saying, I'm here to help. So are there any strings attached to this? If we did get the grant, are there any strings attached?
No, this is.
Will they mandate that we need to do something, you know, different, or?
Not, not for this particular grant. This is strictly a feasibility study where they make recommendations of what we could possibly do in the future, and we can go with that, take it, leave it, whatever. There's no, nothing tied to it, so.
And if they do put something on it?
We don't have to accept it.
And then we can go, no, we're good, we don't need it.
Yeah.
So there's a resolution on page 411.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item is a resolution of support for participating in the Virginia Resource Authority Support Agreement for the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission. Mr. Crisco?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you guys remember, I spoke to this at our last meeting. This is just a final straw to say that we're going to participate. We are needing this because when I got, when I started on this Board of Supervisors, you guys faithfully entrusted me to go to the Planning District Commission. I've been there every year since, I've been the chair the last couple of years. It is funny that when I started there, we had about a million to a million and a half dollar budget at that Planning District Commission, and now we're probably running at about eight and a half to nine, getting ready to go to 10 or 11 next year with the budget. This is a safety gap, because we are running into issues where we are not getting our reimbursements timely enough. So this is just a backstop. We actually went and got another revolving loan earlier this year, I guess, actually, yeah, earlier this year, because we kept bumping up against it. Well, we got that set up, and we realized it wasn't quite enough. So this is a half a million dollar stopgap. And if all nine localities participate, the prorated amount would be $71,429 per county. That's if we were to have an issue. We have not had an issue in the 222 grants totaling over $222 million in the history of this. But we don't want to, let's say the next thing we start on is Aberdeen Creek, we get the first draw, and then all of a sudden, they don't send us the money for 90 days, and we can't, we have no way to send that money. It's just a pure safety gap. So at the most, well, the least amount that we'd be on the hook for would be $71,429. And I don't think we have them all listed in here yet for the amounts.
No.
Because not every locality has approved this. The other beautiful thing is King and Queen has already said that if they don't do it, they've already put up the whole half a million. But this would make us a willing participant, so if it's one of our projects, it'll keep going. Because if we don't participate, and one of our projects is the one that doesn't get the reimbursement, it's just going to stall. So it's just, it's being a willing participant and continue working in the faith and trust that we have the PDC.
Any questions? Dr. Orth?
So, being a good neighbor, we, if something comes up where we, you guys need additional money, we loan your commission $72,000, or everyone, everyone puts that money in the pot.
That would be such a worst-case scenario, that we would probably have to have emergency meetings here to deal with something else before we would worry about this. But it's, it's just a.
It's a stopgap, in case something happens.
It's a, this is a.
This is just as.
Mechanism of last resort.
This is something that because your group is experiencing problems where people are not providing the proper reimbursement in a timely fashion.
And it's our state partners.
To keep money in the bank.
Right, it's our, and it's, there's no, there's no true money.
No, this is, this is in the event that the PDC, the MP PDC does not pay the loan back. We would then be on the hook for the $71,000 minimum.
Right, correct. It's, it's a, it's, it's mere protection that our, that our projects as a whole in the Middle Peninsula continue to move forward in the event that one of our state partners doesn't get their reimbursement to us in a timely fashion, which it's gone from, you know, we were pretty confident, we were getting them every 30 days, then it was 45, and now someone are banging up a little bit closer to 60 days. We're hoping that, that fluctuates back down, but this is just continuing along with our partnership with the PDC.
The resolution on page 413? Okay, just checking.
Second.
Ms. Steele.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
And Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is a review and discussion of the Board's 2025 organizational meeting materials.
There are a couple of things that we'd like to get some guidance on, and just point out a few things as we prepare for what will be in the next agenda and for your organizational meeting. So first of all, there's a request that if you do have edits and things that you'd like to see in that agenda, to please let us know by December 16th. If you have suggestions, and those will all be highlighted in whatever comes out to you all. But one of the things, as we know, July 4th can be on different days of the week. There are people who take that week off for vacation. And we would like to know whether you all would like, because you only have one meeting in July scheduled, if you follow your pattern, would you want to do as you did this time and meet the third Tuesday, instead of having a first Tuesday, do the third Tuesday, but noting that this time, July 1st. So in other words, it's not right next, it's not like it's the third or the fourth or whatever. So, it's just really whether the Board feels that you would have a better attendance doing the third week of the month versus the first week, because of July 4th is during that week. And if there's a. Doing the third. Okay, so we'll put that in there for the proposed, that you'll get to see again. Secondly, the planning commission has stated that they would like to have a joint meeting, hopefully in February, and then another one later on, probably in August, is what we'd be planning on, to work on the comp plan, to kind of do some kickoff. And we are anticipating that we would be sharing in the board packet for that joint meeting, the results of the survey that was just done, the statistically valid survey. We were going to give you a couple of teasers at the retreat. We'll still do that in January, but we would have the whole information, as well as Ms. Ducey Ortiz is planning on doing sort of like a, this is what the public said, and this is how it aligns to your comp plan currently. So in other words, do they or do they not agree with your comp plan? And so that would help with having the two groups together, to have that background prior to your actual meeting.
I think we had a great meeting with the EDA, and I know there was some discussion about an annual meeting. You know, just because, you know, we need to keep our fingers on the pulse of what's happening with the business. You know, we get our updates, but I think it's something that the Board should consider, having some sort of annual meeting with the EDA.
Okay.
So that we understand what they do, and they understand what we're doing.
Okay, and.
Just that, I mean, I thought it was productive.
Right, and we can put one of those in for the calendar. Is there a particular time of year that you would like to?
Just when things aren't as busy after the, you know, after the budget, and maybe some.
Like a June, July, or August, when you're already down to one meeting anyway, I mean, July, but maybe June.
Yeah.
Okay, we will add that in. And then, as indicated earlier tonight, that the retreat is postponed from this weekend, so we're going to be getting out a doodle poll to you, and that will occur in 2025. And then later on, we'll look at, assuming that we might want to have another retreat for 2025. So we'll have that. For the rules of procedure, there, wanted to make you aware that there's going to be one change coming from work from the county attorney, and working with Ms. Cronin and Ms. Ducey Ortiz, and the comments that were raised, looking at the consistent, the question of whether citizen or public is used for comments, and, and having a consistency with the state code. There were questions about whether the State Park could, as they did comment on the rezoning request. And, and so there will be a memo coming out explaining all this, and we anticipate suggesting a change in your rules of procedure that would state public instead of the word citizens. And then again, any other revisions and things that you all would like to see with your standards of conduct or code of ethics, if you would please let us know by December 16th? I'm glad to answer any other questions.
All right. Very good. Next item will be board appointments.
Mr. Chair, there are two candidates for the Department of Social Services, and I need to do some additional work regarding that appointment, and would appreciate it if that decision could be deferred until our first meeting in January.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have two people.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Mr. Wilson and Mr. Cook to the Board of Equalization.
I'll reappoint Mr. Bars to the EDA, and Mr. Christopher Lee to the Wetlands Board in Chesapeake Bay as an alternate.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we still need to find a real estate appraiser for Board of Equalization, and go from there. All right, next item, county attorney items.
Just unmodifiably glad to be here.
Board and.
That's my point, he used the word, the adjective, I mean, the ad, yes, the adjective, unmodified, but I've always heard it unqualified. But I was edumacated by Maria, and she said they're interchangeable. So that's why I said unmodified, rather than unqualified.
I think we're all unqualified.
Well, we're a little something.
All right, Board and Commission reports.
The PDC thanks you all for your support.
Supervisor discussion? Dr. Orth?
The dog park issue. Can we get some resolution to what exactly happened?
Yes.
With that? I mean, I understand the need of people to have a place where their dogs can run and unfettered. It would be nice to have something for people that have dogs, because there are a lot of dogs in this county. If you do any knock, door knocking, I'd say over 50% of people have dogs.
My, my grandchild would kill all the dogs he sees.
I will definitely follow up and provide some additional information. And I think the public, you know, they were not aware of the plans. We've, we've had a CIP for a dog park for many years.
But there's.
And there's also been issues that I think Mr. Wilmont might have even had to weigh in on. I know that Mr. Berenek did, but Abington Park is in a leash law area. And so there was some, trying to work with people, but you're in a leash law area, you can't say, here, go break the law. So.
But, but there's a fence around this, but the county took the gates out, so they put the gates back in.
Well, I need to find out about, that was the first I'd heard about that tonight. And I, and I know there's another side to the story, so I will definitely find out more information and get that to you. And I totally agree that, I mean, I'm supportive and have been for years, that we don't have a facility, and I think the point about tourists is a good point, too.
They're so well-used, and the people that go there, I mean, it's almost a social outing. You know, it's like me go to the gym, and I get to meet people that I don't ever see. I mean, these people have dogs, and it's kind of really socially, you know.
I think it would be rather inexpensive to put the gates back up.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's fenced in.
Could just let us know.
You take them away.
I will get back to you on that.
All right, anything else on supervisor discussion? Anything else on supervisor discussion? Next.
No discussion, Mr. Chair, but thank you all so much for accommodating.
Yes, sir.
For the, for scheduling the retreat. Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is a closed meeting for personnel matters, county administrators' contract. Mr. Wilmont, would you read us into closed session?
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular, a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of December 3, 2024. And whereas the nature of the subject is personnel matters, more specifically, the county administrators' contract, such discussion in closed meeting is expressly permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purposes herein expressed pursuant to the legal authority herein recited.
So moved. Ms. Steel, will you pull the board?
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?[1687.83]